We want to ready a piece of equipment this next time.
Oh, Tammy tonight? Let's call a meeting to order. We're all here except for Tammy. Anybody heard from Tammy?
I'm sure she's on the way.
Okay. We'll leave it at that. Item two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of November the 6th, 2018. Anyone?
I'm concerned about all of them, but I... We'll discuss them as they come along.
We're not surprised, Darrell. Do you have one you want?
No.
Okay. Item three. Discuss bail procedures ordinance and living in tenants.
Tents.
Tents. Ordinance.
Well, I'm gonna turn it over for an initial discussion to Commissioner, what else?
Good evening, everyone. Basically, I approached Carolyn, was talking about some of our bail procedures, some of the things that we do in terms of the automatic reasons why when a police officer enters into a situation, what the procedure is, and what some of the things that people automatically have to go to jail for if a police officer arrives on the scene. We started looking at through our ordinances and some of our procedures and thought some of them just didn't quite frankly didn't make sense. And so what we've done is, is we've gone through and we've looked at some of those things and tried to line through some of them to eliminate them. We're talking about some things that could be dealt with with a discussion, a fine, and then and move on as opposed to taking somebody to jail if they're not a danger to themselves or a danger to the community as a whole. And so this is, this is basically what it's about. There's a few changes in there. The other one was if you found somebody who was in a tent in the back of a building or in the woods somewhere and they were in somebody else's property, they would go to jail for that as opposed to them just having to pack up their tent and leave. So, you know, simple things like that that we can avoid putting the burden of housing somebody, feeding somebody, and all of these processes that make our cause as far as law enforcement and protection of the community such more, such more higher than what it should be. We can reduce and just deal with fines. This is of a larger, a part of a larger thing that we're trying, that I'm trying to do right now in terms of how we deal with, with law enforcement. I'd like to see us implement more community service type programs that are enforced and are, you know, to where we can have it be a benefit to our community as opposed to continue to impose these reciprocating fines that just get higher and higher and higher and individuals just end up in jail. And it doesn't do any good for the community. It doesn't do any good for the, for the individual at all. So...
Great.
That's that.
Our thought was that if a person is homeless and whether it's living in tents or just not having a home and living on a bench, I don't think that the police department often charges people. But if they charge them and they are homeless, I think $200 will get their attention. I don't know why it needs to be five. You know? So, so this was just a reduction. And then the other one, one of the things is that we would, for non-traffic offenses, we would take an Oklahoma identification card to establish where they live or a United States military identification, which hopefully would be able to satisfy, the officer needs to be able to ascertain who the person is, that they're not going to endanger them, endanger themselves, others, or property, and, and that they're willing to sign a promise to appear. But there are people that do not have driver's licenses, and that's why we have the Oklahoma identification card.
Carol, can I just jump in real quick?
Yes.
As it stands right now, the way the ordinance stands, if there was an infraction of some sort, some sort, and they didn't have an Oklahoma state driver's license, they would, they would have to be taken in at that particular point as opposed to another form of federal identification or, or just a general state license. So this is something that we're cleaning up our books to where our officers have the discretion to be able to accept, you know, a license that, you know, you could, or identification you could get on a plane with, but, you know, an officer wouldn't be able to accept. So it's giving them a bit more discretion in order to be able to help with that.
Great.
If there are any other questions, we can go on to the next panel.
That's all very rational.
When did this come up? Five years ago.
Five years ago?
2013.
2013 is when it last changed.
Yes.
Yeah.
At that time, we changed something. I do, we may have changed the file or something.
I have no clue what.
Neither do I.
From reviewing, it looks like we enhanced a lot of our fines in 2013 and made them the maximum and stuff. And it just, we're looking through them to see where we can, and I, and I talked with Mr. Gilbert, and the, the need for revenue shouldn't go to the point where we're imprisoning people because of, you know, we don't need the $300 if someone is homeless. So we're trying to be sensible.
Be humane.
Yes.
I like that.
Are, are all the officers, are, are all of them aware?
So, so if you don't mind, I can speak to this. One of the things when we had the, because we had a meeting with the, the Chief of Police and we, there was just a meeting, we all discussed it. And one of the things we want to make abundantly clear, most of these things, the officers out there are using their discretion and being very good about what, what we're talking about already. We have an excellent police force that does a really, really good job. What we're doing right now is ensuring that if there's a change of leadership or a change of perspective, that our ordinances match what it is that we want as a community and we don't have to rely solely on the discretion of officers, that they, they're following what it is that our laws say. Our laws say, as it stands right now, when they come across them at this particular time, they've got to go to jail. That's not really happening very frequently, if at all. So as it is, our, our officers are doing an excellent job, but we want to make sure that our laws are following what it is that we want as, as a, as a community.
If they're doing their job, then we, the ordinance is not working.
I agree.
Yeah, because if the ordinance is written one way, you know, they want to be merciful in that situation.
Very much.
And they do it. I mean, they're going to be accountable for not upholding the ordinance of the law, so...
It's counterproductive.
Yeah.
Well, is, I hate to say, is $200 too much? I mean, if somebody's homeless and they can't afford a place to live.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to open the floodgates. On the other hand, I don't want to punish somebody for being poor.
Well...
And I don't know what the answer is. I don't know if there's another way to, to do...
I don't think it's charged that much. And most likely, the officer, I mean, in fact, I know that it's not charged very often. But they could do a warning and, you know, for a homeless person, probably $100 plus all of the fees is plenty. But I didn't want to, you know...
I understand.
I wanted to give you all a chance to express your thoughts. If you want to go lower, you can.
I think $100.
I think $100 in cost is probably...
Okay.
And I don't necessarily think that's bad, but remember it says that it's up to $200. So there is a degree of...
Okay.
...of discretion and flexibility that's there. So I'm fine either way.
Carol, is that based on a fine schedule? Does the municipal court have a fine schedule for types of offenses or how would the judge, if he had somebody in front of him for this, and he found him guilty and wanted to charge him a fine, how would he figure out what to charge them?
It's in the computer. We used to have a fine schedule, but...
He would charge up to 200, so he could do 100, he could do 50, he could do 35, he could do 10.
Yes. Now, the important thing is that the amount, the number amount is what the bail is, is based on. If, if, for instance, they were arrested, if it says 200, then the bail will be based on that. So, you know, I can bring it back at 100. And now, the, the state imposed fines are, I mean, fees are, you know, about $100 already. So it really is about $185 if it's 100.
Okay. And talking with the, the Chief as well, generally when it comes to situations like this, you're dealing with somebody who's probably trespassing at that point. So you're very rarely going to have a situation to where this is going to be the only charge at that particular time. So again, with that discretion, if it's somebody who's done it repeated amount of times and you haven't been able to deal with them, it's, it's, it's very infrequent that it's just going to be this. So that's something to factor in as well. Okay. But I, yeah. 100, 200, I'm fine.
100?
Anything else? Item four, update on the downtown art project by Romi Owens.
Yes, Mayor, I've asked Romi to come in because I know several of you are interested in the project. And as you'll remember, Romi updated us, it's been several months ago now. Since that time, the city has issued the building permit. She's had the groundbreaking, and I see steel laying out there. This is a great opportunity to update us on when it's going to go, when it's going to be done, show us the material, and answer questions.
Great. I'm going to pass this around, starting with Commissioner Norwood. If you'd just pass that around, you can get a sense of the material we're going to use for the structure. It is a 3/8 inch galvanized vinyl coated steel that will be printed in custom colors that spectrum from dark blue to a medium blue so that in the daytime, there is a visual interest to investigate further as to what this is. But at night, in theory, the dark blue would disappear into the sky and it would emulate, in some ways, the shading of a blue jay is the most common bird to see where there's a spectrum of dark to light. And I, and I think that it's a really pleasing color. Of course, I know the city, I mean, its color is a beautiful shade of blue, and that's, it's a nod to that as well, making it any other color feels inauthentic to the project.
And this was, this is approved by Fire Marshal?
It was. Yep.
I know that was a big headache, getting the right material. But this is already blessed and approved and all that?
Yes. The Fire Marshal has approved it, and it wasn't a headache. It was really nice to be able to go through a process to make sure that whatever is constructed will be safe for the public under any circumstances.
So is this going to be woven? Is it going to be a...
No, it's not going to be woven. It's going to be string art in a way that, I'm sorry, I don't have a, an image. There is an image online. I don't know how easily it is to access the internet to pull up that image. But if you go to romiowens.com, that's my website. R-O-M-Y.
O-W-E-N-S.
O-W-E-N-S.
Dot com?
Yep. And if you scroll down to learn more about Under Her Wing Was The Universe, and then scroll down just one image a little further here. This gives you a sense. So there's one pivot point at which the steel will be placed in one inch increments that will follow the next rod that creates over 4,000 connection points and a nice spectrum and shade. At one inch with the size of that cable, it will create a lovely opacity and a nice spectrum. Yeah.
So these, what we just looked at is the, what creates the blue that we're looking at?
Exactly.
And then I saw, how much of the steel is out there at this point?
A third of the steel has been delivered.
Waiting in truckloads?
They're bringing it in truckloads. Yes. Third of the steel was delivered on Thursday, unfortunately.
Now, is the steel going to be finished or coated with something at this point? Because it looks like it's kind of corroded.
It's coming primed, so the primer color is a, is a very rusty color. And then it will be painted. Professional painters will go out and spray it probably with the shade of blue that is the darkest blue, so it will also disappear and complement the steel cable.
What is your projected completion date at this point?
It is fully within our plan to finish by the end of the year. Weather at this point is our biggest obstacle just because if you have been paying attention to all the forecasts, we anticipate a, a very wet and very cold winter. I'm hoping that will hold off until January, but our anticipated date is still to complete by the end of the year.
And on your drawing here, sorry, on your drawing, is this the way it's going to look? The openness, the space that are open rather than it being fully?
Yep.
Covered?
Yep.
Is that different from the original?
It is. In most of the original renderings, there was a complete coverage for it. This seemed, given the challenges that we've had with trying to find the material that creates surface, this seems the most artistic and authentic way to create design and interest without it becoming so linear that it feels like bars. Yeah.
I'm assuming that this is going to be welded?
Yes.
Okay. And on the top part of it, it's going to be welded across the top as well, or is that just going to be that blue material that you just passed around?
So each tower, so there are 14 towers, and you can see how they create four-legged towers. Each of those will be their own independent welded structures that stand and are locked together. Then the steel cable will be what connects and creates stability amongst them.
At the top?
Mm-hmm.
So the ridge of it is going to be the blue?
Yep.
Cord, more or less?
Yep.
And how exactly is this cord going to be attached to those structures?
And there'll be individual rings along the leg that will be welded into place, and then it will literally string from one larger ring to these multiple points going down. And then, I'm not good with the word, there's a...
Turnbuckle.
A turnbuckle. Or there's another word, it's like where you put two pieces of cable together and you crimp them?
A crimp.
A crimp. Thanks, Ben. A crimp. They'll be crimped securely. Yeah.
You're going to have stars for donors. How's that going to fit on these?
So they don't fit on this. The starlights that will fit underneath are their own cable system of lights that have individual bulbs that are, the light has been controlled so that they are star points that are visible from any direction. So if you're looking straight up, you'll see starlights, but if you're looking at it from a distance, you'll be able to see starlights. So you have that experience from any point within the, the structure. And there's, I want to say 47 strands of lights that, that create that thousand stars overhead. And they'll be inside, they won't be, they won't be attached to the steel cable. There'll be another...
They attach the towers separately?
Yeah. There'll be another set of steel cables inside that will anchor that because to comply, to comply with code, when you install any kind of string light, it's, it's pretty critical that there be steel lines, some kind of very strong sturdy cable that those attach to to prevent drooping or to prevent a lot of wind movement.
And as far as the pathway, the walking pathway?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just going through my mind on what I remembered as far as what was going to be done in the beginning.
Yeah.
Are you going to put a concrete base down for a sidewalk, or are you going to still use the, the graphite?
No, we're gonna, yeah, it is. It's been, through conversation through, with the city, the decision was to use concrete. It's easier to maintain, it's more stable, there's less room for breakage. So...
And will the concrete go from the existing parking lot and will it go to the existing sidewalk that's on the east side of the, of, of the art project?
Yes.
Or is it stopped somewhere?
In fact, if you'll scroll up on this page, or scroll down, I'm sorry. I'm directionally challenged sometimes. Here, these are the context site floor and site elevations plans. So you can see in the broader picture how the sidewalk swoops through from parking lot to the east side. And that sidewalk will of course be ADA compatible. We've been talking closely with the city about the importance of grade and the importance of that being a smooth and consistent path.
And is it going to cover the entire area underneath the towers, or is it going, there's going to be grass or something growing under there?
No, underneath the towers, it'll be, it'll be the path that will go the consistent route of it.
Side to side.
I'm actually hoping for side to side. The original plan was that there would be some gravel that would lay along, but through, through the thoughts of how it can be used, I think it's more important that we go edge to edge entirely with concrete, which means that that path will be a certain width coming and going, but throughout the center part, it'll be concrete.
If you did, go ahead. That's a, a lot of concrete work left to do.
It is.
That's a, have, have you had somebody out there to, to check that ground and that grade out there? That's, that's a lot of base work that's going to have to get done.
Yes.
That's not a lot of time to do.
I know.
Okay.
I know.
In terms of, and so, and you're, is the plan still to do concrete footings for the, for the, for the beams themselves as well?
Yeah, of course. Those concrete foot, like that, that will be the first thing that happens is once those steel towers go into place and those holes are in position, once everything is steadied and the electrician has been able to do the work to wire every, every beam that goes up, they'll be submitted or secured in four feet of concrete.
They're four feet deep, aren't they?
They're four feet deep, four feet wide, four feet long. It's a, everything in, in order to satisfy our structural engineers.
Okay. Are you still going to have the plantings in the area?
Sorry?
Are you still going to have the plantings in the area?
Yes. There's still a plan for at least 10 trees. I'm working towards 20 trees. Red buds and Chinese pistachio are the two trees that are native to Oklahoma that I think would be the most enhancing and beautiful in both fall, summer, and winter. Yeah, and that is still the plan. And then, of course, tall grasses, native grasses, wildflowers, those are all part of our plan.
And the prairie will have to be next spring, I see.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're missing the, we're missing the window. The trees can go up in the fall. These trees in particular, in researching them extensively, I've realized that the nice thing about these trees is they are not weather dependent. The only time you can't plant them is in the heat of summer, but, but red buds specifically can be planted at any time of year and survive and thrive in the spring.
So, so when is the actual completion date that you have projected for this project?
Aside from the prairie, which will happen in the spring...
Including the prairie? I'm just looking at when, when we can say this is done.
That's a great question. Planting of the prairie and the tall grasses and seeding can happen as early as March. And once that happens, it just establishes on its own. I think, you know, we all have enough experience with agriculture to know that well-planted grasses can grow relatively quickly. So if we're seeding in March and everything cooperates, we would have growth in April and May.
Romi, who takes over the long-term maintenance?
City takes over, Parks Department takes over the maintenance of the prairie.
When?
Technically, it wouldn't need to be maintained until the following year. When we first had our meetings with Parks to decide what a maintenance plan would be, that was when Kevin was still with the Parks Department, and he had a lot of experience with tall grass prairies and with how to maintain those. And it's a every-third-year burn, a controlled burn, of course, with supervision of the Fire Department, but that that is how you maintain a prairie, and that's how they do it at the Tall Grass Prairie, that's how they do it in Oklahoma City at the Myriad Gardens, that's how they do it at Oakwood Country Club, where every third year, they do a prairie burn, and that is how you replenish and renew and maintain it.
Now, Romi, in the previous design, there was some sort of a bench or something in some part of it. Is that still included?
Yeah, there is, absolutely. A bench is in it.
Is that what that dark...
Yeah, that is the, the projected bench is this black line that goes through. It's a substantial bench. I've been talking with my project partners about the possibility of it being, instead of one continuous bench, maybe it's several smaller benches. I definitely want there to be ample seeding because I, I can't help but see the potential for things like weddings and how important seeding is, especially for older generations. I mean, I know young people like to sit too, but I think about my parents and how seeding would have been critical for their enjoyment. And that anytime you provide a seat in any kind of location, whether it's a park or any placemaking location, seeding, seeding is what keeps people there longer than 30 seconds.
And you project this being wood or metal or...
It is all metal. The seeding may be concrete. Right now, concrete is the plan. Yeah.
I was impressed by the scale of those towers coming off that. I drove by when the first load of steel was being unloaded, watching Klein wrangled those as something to see.
It was, it was entertaining, to say the least.
Yeah.
Because every piece of steel is bent at a different rotation and a different angle. So watching them come off and watching these steels, it was really kind of funny as the crane would go and pick up two or three pieces. Like you know logically the steel is bent, but the way it would come off the train or off the truck and be held there, it didn't feel like the steel was bent. It felt like the steel was giving to the gravity, but it's just the way the steel is designed.
So on the prairie grass, it's not going to be the entire field, right?
No.
It's just the area around the...
Mm-hmm. In fact, you can see that in this plan. What is in the shaded areas down here and around it, that's where the taller grasses are. And then in the majority of the rest of it will be a combination of buffalo and blue grama, which are both very low-growing grasses by design. So they don't get higher than three or four inches so that it's still walkable and manageable without feeling like a super overgrown, bushy, out-of-control lot.
My last question to you is, what do you project or think the atmosphere will look like? In order to be able to see those stars, it's going to need the least amount of lighting to be able to see that.
Right.
So the lighting that's around that area, is there going to be any lighting put in when the electricity is put in, or else, or is it just going to stay pretty much dark in that area?
So there are two lights at each end that become entrance lights that clearly mark entry points and lead from the sidewalk in so that they're, you know, light, of course, being a really important symbol of safety and that this is a welcoming place, but they're, they're very directionally pointed to the path to be controlled so that they're not flooding inside. However, along the entire, the entirety of the path, there's also ADA-compatible lighting that aims down and is low and has a cover so it's not shooting up, but that it illuminates the path. So again, it's safe and people can, can see. Controlling the light really is, it really is a big challenge. And sometimes I will drive by at night and the parking lot lights at the conventions that are on, sometimes they're off on a day when they are fully, fully illuminated. It is competition. However, I think that with the combination of shade being strategically placed where it is and coming down as far as it does, I still think that when you're inside, you're escaping the surroundings and that you can still have a meaningful experience.
In your opinion, do you feel like the project has significantly changed since the first time that we talked about this?
In my opinion, no. It has not significantly changed. The only thing that has continued to change has been trying to figure out the surface design, and that has been, it has been a challenge.
So what it looks like from the outside, from the exterior?
Yeah, but the, the frame has not changed, the path has not changed, the plantings have not changed, the seeding, the, all, all of the other considerations have not. It has only been this one surface design decision that has gone through the different iterations. And, you know, that's not ideal. However, it's not uncommon within public art that these are adaptations. It's really something that happens quite frequently within public art.
Romi, you said you had a partner?
I do.
Can you reveal who that is?
Michael Shuck is my architect. Jessica Nelson's my project manager.
I didn't know whether that had changed or not even.
No, no. No, they have been amazingly helpful and supportive in taking on this as a volunteer project, and I'm grateful for their guidance and their help. and I'm grateful for their guidance and their help. Um, the logistics of this have been, you know, planning all of the partners and the construction dates and the steel delivery that, you know, there's a lot of moving parts with any constructions, construction project. And they they both have been really great advising and helping and honestly for moral support. Like assuring me that while from my perspective with a large-scale project, which I've been part of many, um, that in construction, these are the all of the challenges that have been faced are quite normal. Does it feel normal to me, but I'm learning to roll with that to the best of my ability?
Do you have enough money to do complete the project?
Um, I'm still fifty-six thousand dollars away from the goal, which is, we've raised an additional thirty since the last time I presented. Um, I have been talking at great length with, I would say, two dozen advisors in terms of the fundraising, who all agree, as I do, that once steel goes up, uh people will have a better sense of what it is they're supporting. To this date, everything I've been asking, which I've raised a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars to date, which I I can't emphasize enough the historic significance of an individual artist doing that. Like this is not typical and I feel very successful in that regard. Um, but that at this point, people have been donating on faith that this will happen. And I think once we we do break ground and we've got steel in the air and people can see how large this is and what it is and that it's not such an abstract idea, I'm I'm fully confident that the final results will come in.
Are you still talking to a couple of potential big sponsors who are waiting to see steel up?
I am. I have two corporations who are interested in coming in at a very large donation with naming rights. Um, and and they're waiting. They're waiting to see. And I understand that.
How would naming rights work?
Naming rights um would be the largest sponsor coming in and saying something like the Enid Conference Center, the C and B Center.
I know how naming rights work. I I'm trying to figure out how you're going to secure naming rights for a facility that we're paying for. Or we've 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 secured a forest property. We we have an you have an tentative agreement with the city in terms of what what it's called. How do you um as far as my understanding, we're in an agreement what it's called, where it's gonna be placed and now you're gonna attribute another name to it. I'm just kind of curious.
I think as far as sponsorship, we've also authorized her to do a lot of signage with and with and have given her a lot of discretion in listing donors and sponsors. And and I'll also note that we also paid for the C and B Center and yet it is the C and B Center.
The CNBC Center that that the the naming rights and the funds go towards what we make the determination, what we made the determination for, not her as a as a private entity as 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 far as I would. I mean, I think there would be a little bit of a difference in that. Not that I'm totally opposed to that. I know you've got to find a way in order to be able to secure the funding. Um, I I for one am concerned and con- concerned with that being that it's been, what, three months since we've talked? Um, and you were able to get thirty thousand in that timeframe. You've got two months in order to be able to complete the project. You've gotta pull fifty thousand dollars in that timeframe and that minds. And that, at the same time, while not exceeding the budget any more than what it's already done, because when we first heard about the project, it was supposed to be a sixty thousand dollar project. And now it's two hundred and twenty some odd thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And it worked. Our hope, I guess, is that that it's gonna stay at that level before we get to the end. We haven't even busted ground yet.
Yeah.
The amount that the city's putting in hasn't changed. I'm sorry, I'm over in the corner because I had a meeting that ran late. But the amount that the city's putting in hasn't changed.
Sure.
And our project becomes the property of the city when it's over. So it's not like we're everybody's just giving Alvin a bunch of money to do whatever she wants to with. They're giving it to a project that becomes property of the city.
Correct. Once it's finally completed.
And Jonathan, you're being awfully harsh here. This is, we have an artist who is putting, a lot of effort has raised a boatload of money to put in a huge piece of public art that's gonna benefit the city of Enid. And I understand that it's not, your enthusiasm level is visibly low. But she has come a long way and made a incredible, incredible effort to come this far. I mean, can we be a little more supportive and and I understand it's not perfect, it's not on the timetable everybody would like, but can we be, I mean,
So you're putting?
Encourage our artist here a little bit. This is gonna be fantastic for the city.
Let's 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 be clear. You've put a lot of disclaimers on on this. Let's be supportive in spite of the fact it's busted budget by uh by over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Without costing us a dime, Jonathan.
Without costing us a dime.
Her budget, not ours.
Again, it's the again, it is the city's project, is it not?
No.
No.
It's not.
So so we we do not take possession of this uh of this item at some point in time that we still haven't been able to pin down yet?
It becomes a city of Enid.
When?
Piece of art as soon as it's done.
When it's done, when it's done.
Why why is what is your problem? I don't understand what the what the Great Harper, it's not going per- Do you many uh do you know how many of our projects that we have paid for, that we have built, that we have put much more money in, don't come in on time, get changed constantly?
What is our?
That's every project we do, man.
What is our responsibility to do when they don't come in on time?
And and if we were and if she was asking us to kick in another thirty thousand dollars, then I get it.
So?
But she's not asking us to kick in another dime.
So the statement what that you're making right now is that we go forward quietly at this particular point and there shouldn't be another ask going forward?
I I Romy has never asked the city of Enid for another after the initial?
There shouldn't be another ask period at this point, because what happens next is?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
And I'm getting ready to clarify. Uh, what's going to happen next is that we're gonna bust the suspense of one January. We already know that. We've already established that the seeding isn't gonna take place in the timeframe that we know. But we also know with this project, in terms of getting that concrete set and getting the uh the steel into the ground, we are not going to make the timeframe in which it is. I I would challenge any construction person who's out there to be able to say that they're gonna make that time suspense by the end of this year in order to be able to get that done. So we know it's going to bust. Contractually, at this particular point, that means that we're going to have to sit and we're going to have to come to some sort of sort of agreement that we're okay with continuing to proceed beyond the point in time in which we agreed upon. Mind you, that is that is uh somewhere around seventeen to eighteen months beyond the timeframe that we talked about. I remember, oh, just one more second. I remember being chastised because we couldn't get it approved by September of last year because we were trying to be able to make a make an art pro- make an art uh of of of
Art council.
Of art council of of Oklahoma during that timeframe. We've now beat that timeframe and we've now lapped it over for over a year and we're still haven't got steel in the ground. So please excuse me if I'm not allowed to be able to express a certain degree of skepticism that we're having a problem getting this project that was supposed to be done sometime last year and we haven't gotten even started yet.
Well, that's not, first of all, that's not accurate. The fact that saying it's not started yet is wildly inaccurate and that the amount of effort that has gone into this behind the scenes, the steel that has been twisted and tweaked is all done. It's paid for. It's there. It's either on the lot or on a truck in Oklahoma City. That the Romy and Michael and Jessica have worked really hard with staff below us, the the engineering, the code, the parks, that uh fire marshal getting the skin approved, that a huge amount of work has gone into this. This isn't a, this isn't a, you know, a park restroom. This isn't some boring structure. This is a unique piece of art. And yeah, the timeline got busted and that is absolutely unfortunate.
Sure.
But progress is being made. It's not like we're sitting here and nothing has happened. A huge amount has happened. It hasn't happened as quick as we want to do. And can we be a little bit?
I have.
I mean, can we be a little bit understanding of the difficulty and the?
Motion to rescind the funds. I haven't stomped at the downstairs.
And I haven't indicated that. I haven't indicated that either, but you're?
All I've all I've asked are, I would think, are questions that anybody would ask in terms of what it is that's that's taking place at this point. And quite frankly, the fact that we haven't done it every month. Uh uh because again, if this was our home or if this was our property that we were talking about, we would be a lot more scrutinizing over what it is that's taking place. So again, I think, Romy, I appreciate what it is that you're doing, despite what it is that you what it it may be coming off as. But as as a represent, I have I have, it's my responsibility in order to be able to ask these questions. It's this, there is, there's no reason why we would not ask the question as to why it's taking as long as it is. We would, I should be asking the question whether your expectation to be able to meet the next deadline is going to happen. I should be asking the expect uh asking the question whether or not you, I mean, all of these questions, I think, are reasonable. I haven't asked anything crazier off the wall at this particular point.
No, but the manner in which you've asked it has been very combative and we've got somebody who's working really hard to bring something to us.
So let me say this.
Give us six-figure of our project.
If I've come off combative, I apologize because that's not my intent. My intent is to ask the essentially at this point, the hard questions. Because we need to have the 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 hard and fast answers about what they what it is. My intent is not to be obstruction in any way, shape or form. If it was, I'd be telling Gerald monthly, holler up in front of here and give me an explanation why I haven't seen broken ground yet. It's not my intent. But I have people who call me and ask me questions about this record.
Are they asking you how much of this delay is because of the city of Enid? Are they asking you how much of this delay is because of the engineering or because of the fire marshal or because of all the nonsense the city's put through and the hoops they've made her to do?
They ask, they ask about?
This is not all her fault.
I understand that, but and I understand.
And there's no damage at the end of the day.
No damage, no damage to who?
Anybody.
Okay.
Because we're not, because we're not spending any more money on it than we are.
Just talking about financial, we're talking about our ability in order to be able to complete a project in the manner in which we say we're gonna complete it, the way in which we say we're gonna do it and the timeframe in which we say to do it. Our reputation is a part of it.
Oh, but come on, Jonathan.
I agree a hundred percent.
You can't be critical of our reputation on timeframe. We blow timeframes every project we do. I mean, this is how construction works.
I'm not saying that that it takes the project.
You specifically said that it was damaging our reputation, but in fact this has taken longer.
Listen, I did not say it takes the project off the table, but we have an obligation to ask the question.
No, but but the statement was made, you did make was that this is somehow, the delay is damaging our reputation in some manner.
Our reputation in order to be able to do business in the manner in which we say we're going to do it. When we tell the people of the city of Enid that we're gonna invest thirty thousand dollars in property on a project that's gonna be up by a certain timeframe and it is not up, that goes directly to our credibility as an organization. I I don't understand how that's even debatable.
I think that the reality of construction is such that we, that it is debatable. But it also, you know, listen, we're talking about a-
If you contract a contractor to come to a uh to build you a house, this is essentially what happened. The project was brought to us and it was said it was gonna be completed in a certain amount of time. And if we were to provide a certain amount of funds in a timeframe, it would be completed in that timeframe. If we did that to a contractor who was gonna build my own personal home and he busted that suspense by eighteen months, you're telling me you're not questioning his credibility from that point going forward?
Well, but you have, your statement was that you're damaging the city of Enid's credibility somehow.
Because we vouched, because we were the ones who stood up there and said and voted and said, we take her on her word that she's going to be able to accomplish this.
But we also?
We we made an agreement that we were going to do this together, right?
But we also said that we want to be a community in which people can come to us and do interesting things and do new and different things. And this is without a doubt, new and interesting and different.
I agree.
And I think that we all understood.
But that's not in question.
And I think we all should understood, Jon- Jonathan, that we understand, Jonathan, that part of doing new big things means there will be stumbling blocks.
I I.
I guarantee you that our pipeline to Call Lake, which costs eight orders of magnitude more than this little thing,
Yep.
is gonna have more stumbling blocks and and delays and deadlines. That hotel that is now going up.
I can definitively.
I was told that hotel would be done five years ago.
One of you hate one of you to time, but run out loud.
Yes, yes, sir. If that pipeline takes a year and a half longer than what we projected to do, I promise you, we'll be sitting here answering questions.
And I'm not saying that the question should be asked, but I am saying that I don't think it's damaging our credibility and that we should be a, that it doesn't hurt us to be appreciative of the contribution that's being made, even with stumbling blocks. That perhaps being supportive as our city staff has done, as the engineers working have done.
Yes, sir.
That that we can ask questions without without, yeah.
Both of you have a right to your concerns. He has a right.
I.
And I certainly never said otherwise.
We all have a right.
If you can, if you can tell me at any point in time in this conversation where I demeaned her or I disrespected her, I'd appreciate if you would let me know. I've already apologized.
Sitting across the table from you.
I'll be honest with you, the fact that the that I can raise a concern that the timeframe has been busted and asking for explanations or at least projections in terms of what time it's going to be completed, if you find that as disrespect, I just, I've been, come on.
Manner, manner is which.
Okay, so my my disposition was came off as combative. Again, I apologize to you for that because that was not my intent. My intent is to get hard answers to hard questions.
And and my goal is to see something happen and accept that the world is imperfect, but we have somebody who is, again, end of the day, we're getting a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of asset here that we paid thirty grand for.
Do you not think the manner in which it's done is important? Because you just said the manner in which I delete delivered the message was important. Do you not think the manner in which this project is delivered is important?
I don't know what that means in the sense that I apologize.
Mean on time, on budget, in the manner in which it in in the uh the the look in which it said it was going to be delivered, do you not think those things are critically important to the manner in which it's done?
I think that the project is a piece of art that is unique and that it has gone through some twists and turns and changes due to many, many factors. Some of them which are our fault, some of which are due to
Who's how?
The the city of, the city regulations, the code regulations, the the
That's 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 not the city's fault. The city has, the city has regulations that existed in this project.
Okay, then I think Some of which are in part to the fact that this is new and the city has had to address the fact that this, this isn't a cookie cutter project. We're really good. Our city staff, engineers and code, everybody, fire marshal, great at good cookie cutter projects. This is unique. And some of the delay has no doubt been caused by outside issues. Some of the delay, no doubt, has also been caused by working through a complicated project in front of us.
Sure.
And that's all unfortunate, but the project is still happening. It is making progress. It is making progress. Every time she's here, progress has been made, a huge amount of it behind the scenes. A huge amount of engineering work behind the scenes.
Sure.
And I am thrilled that it's happening and I'm thrilled that it's contributing to our community and that it's gonna be a great, big piece of art that we're going to get to look at for a long time. And I would have loved for it to be happened sooner, but I don't think the delay is as monumental a flaw as you seem to. And that's fine, but I would like to be a bit more supportive and let's accept that we can't go back and turn back the clock, but we can, we can help get it done. We can close it.
I think the city's been very cooperative in trying to get it done.
I think the staff has been fantastic.
I and if there's something that I need, I mean, other than vote, I don't know what else role I'm supposed to play in the process and again, and ask these questions. Uh uh again.
A donation, I'm sure, would be welcome.
Not.
Always be fundraising.
Yep, have, again, do what you gotta do. No, no problems with that.
There's no Germany to take liking.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate both sides of that. Uh, I agree with Jonathan. I mean, when we, when this uh subject first came up, it was a very close vote, as everyone recalls. And I've gotten more calls in the last year and a half on this one project than anything else I've ever had. So you can see where the concern comes from when there's delays and when uh the the structure that was used for the canopy has changed one or two or three or four times. Uh, it it appears almost like incomplete staff work when the project came to us to start with. So I was a little disappointed in that. Uh, and I understand things are going on and I and I think it's probably working its way through. Uh, but I understand Jonathan's frustration. It's the same as mine. Every time I get a phone call, hey, how's that going? Every time I go to breakfast, I gotta hear the same jokes. And uh
Nobody brings up Cleveland Street?
No, no, no.
Hotel?
No.
I've never received one phone call.
So anyway, uh, but I appreciate the discussion that we had. I think I think we all understand a little better than we before we started.
I have a question. How many times has the fire marshal made you change your skin on the project?
Just once. And and, you know, it's interesting, in the course of public art, um, I'll remind you, this isn't my first public art project and I am probably one of twenty people in the state well-versed in public art, not only in Oklahoma, but nationally. Um, flammability has never been a question. I'm grateful that the conversation happened. As soon as it was introduced and the paracord was deemed flammable, I was happy, happy to quickly resolve that. Because as soon as that conversation is introduced, if it had been approved, someone would have set fire to it. And I don't want that. I know none of us want that. So changing it once from the macrame, which I still think would have been beautiful, into this, which I also think will be beautiful, um, that was an easy thing to resolve. It really was, and I was happy to make that change. Macrameing on site for that would have physically killed me. Um, if if I could before, I'm happy to answer more questions. I really am.
Any, wait a minute.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Go ahead, please.
Um. I'm genuinely sorry this is taking so long. Nobody is more sorry this is taking so long than I am. And while I do one hundred percent percent respect the fact that that you all face scrutiny from your constituents, um, and that the city of Enid is looked at pat, looked on with this project, with this example that will no doubt be a case study, um, I think at the end- I think at the end of the day, we all realize that it is, it is my reputation that will be most damaged if this is not completed. The timeline, the adjustments that have had to be made, they're not easy. They're disappointing every time. I'm doing the absolute most due diligence that I can to keep moving forward. And while I would love for this to have been done a year ago, I would have loved for this to have been done in March. I would love for this to be over. I know that it will be and I'm so optimistic it will be beautiful and an asset. I don't, I don't disregard your statements and I totally appreciate your passion about it because I think it's really important that this does raise these conversations. I mean, the city of Enid has tough conversations all the time. I know for a fact the Cal Pipeline is a tough conversation that I'm having with people because I feel strongly about it. I mean, water, hello, is the most important thing that we can have. And this is just in the big picture of things, a small art project. But it's the first of its kind in Enid and people are paying attention and I'm glad for that. I'm grateful for that. I want people to be paying attention so that when it is successful, anyone who is a naysayer or who has not appreciated, uh, the full complexities that this project has bought, brought, like, hopefully they will look at it and appreciate it too. I hope, I still am optimistic this is something that we can all be proud of. I wish it were happening faster. And, I mean, I, I know that doesn't address the fact that you have to answer to constituents and that this is a joke to some people, but the response that I get and the support that I hear from Enid citizens and from people all over the state, it's overwhelmingly positive and more people are encouraging to me than negative to me, although I have received very hateful messages and I have had very painful conversations face-to-face with people in restaurants or at events. And that's not easy, but I feel like I'm trying to do this with as much grace and integrity and dignity as possible. And that while I, I understand you put faith in me to do something by a certain time and I have let that down, I'm still, I'm still bustin' hump to do the best I can.
Mayor, I, I have, uh, I'd like to make one comment and, and ask one question. And the comment is, as, as I look at what you're showing us here this evening, this looks entirely different than what you presented to us, uh, almost eighteen months ago. And, and actually I like this.
Thank you.
I mean, this is colorful. It's got a color attached to it. And I mean, this, this, this actually looks like an art project.
Thank you.
And I don't think we'll have to explain to people what this is if they come by and look at it. But, and my question is, I, my understanding is that it, with public art, that there needs to be a finite period of time that we're obligated as a city to leave this in place. And I was wondering what that is, if we actually have executed an agreement on that.
There is an executed agreement and it's ten years.
Ten years.
And at ten years that the city of Enid decides they would no longer like this and want, want to demolish it, you have my blessing. I, uh, deal in ephemeral art all the time, ephemeral meaning temporary and I value that in many ways, um, I'll use Burning Man as an example. Some of you may or may not know what Burning Man is. It's a festival out in the northern, uh, Arizona, Nevada desert, um, that happens every year. Fantastic art is constructed exclusively for this one week event in which sixty thousand people descend and create a makeshift city that appears overnight and disappears in a week. And at the end of each day, art is burned to the ground. And you either got to see it or you didn't. And it's a unique experience. I'm not suggesting this gets burned to the ground in ten years. First of all, it's not flammable, so, so that won't, that won't work, but, um-
There's a good chance that won't happen because the fire station's only three blocks away.
Yeah, right. Um, but I think that there's something really lovely and really special about that. I mean, I think every single one of us in our entire lives have experienced the idea that nothing lasts forever. We all have experienced death and grief in that way. And in ten years, if the city leaders decide they want to bulldoze this, whether the public loves it or not, I will have no heartburn over that. I do believe that it will be so beautiful and I do believe that the economic impact of this will be greater than could even be anticipated. And I do believe that the city will want to keep it because it will become a destination and it will become the heart of a city in the way that public art should be. I was just in Tonkawal today, um, which is of course a remarkably small city in comparison. Small town, I was over there talking to a class at NOC, um, and the labyrinth, if you are not familiar with Tonkawal, they have a labyrinth in the city heart that was highly contested, um. In ironically, the exact same ways that this was. Uh, it was labeled pagan, it was labeled, uh, sacrilegious. It was not well-received, but now it is called the heart of the city. And when they have concerts, where's the concert? It's at the heart. Nobody's doing their concert over in the building. They're doing it in their downtown square at the labyrinth that is quite lovely and quite meditative and not meant to be religious by any stretch of the imagination. Labyrinths transcend religion, um, and are embraced by many cultures around the world. Um, and I thought that that was so interesting that a project that could be so divisive for a community actually became a great unifier. And I think once people see this in context and understand that it's nothing more than the idea to have a nighttime experience or a daytime experience under something that is truly unique, I think that people will love it and they're going to want to keep it. But if in ten years, you have a better idea, you have someone else who comes in and says, I'm going to make art for your city, uh, go for it, do it. That's great. And it's in a, there's a contract that outlines those parameters.
Romy, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Hearing none, we are adjourned. We'll meet upstairs at six-thirty.
Bill, I would like to make one comment before we adjourn. Uh, Gerald, I, I would like to have this item brought back to us on our, in our first meeting in January, uh, where, you know, we'll have an opportunity to, uh, either accept it or determine that it is not going to be, you know, successful.
Okay.
Okay. We're adjourned.
Thank you for watching the Enid City Commission Study Session. All meetings are broadcast on local cable channel twelve and in high definition on channel one twelve. In addition, the study session is live streamed on the web at enidtv.org. If you have any questions or comments regarding this broadcast, please visit the city of Enid website at enid.org.